Could you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, would you remain standing for a minute? Counselor De Castro.
Thank you. I request a moment of silence for Brockton Police Lieutenant Kenneth La Grice, who died last week on May 5th. Lieutenant La Grice was a 34-year member of the Brockton Police Department. He spent most of that time in the detectives' division, including as chief of the detectives. He was an active member of the police special reaction team, and served in other positions there during his 34-year tenure. Outside of work, Lieutenant La Grice loved being known as Coach La Grice, and he was the winningest softball coach in the history of Stonehill College. He coached there for 17 seasons, including 12 seasons as head coach. Lieutenant La Grice was also a husband, a father of five, a grandfather of five, and a friend to many, and he will be greatly missed. So let us now remember his years of service to the city of Brockton in this moment of silence.
Thank you. Counselors, just a couple of preliminary announcements. Counselor Monahan was called into work because of emergencies in his, at his place of work, and Counselor Cadozo is out of the country, but she is joining us this evening through remote access and the telephone, so she will be a full participant in the meeting. This meeting is being held in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's signed open meeting law order dated March 12, 2020, wherein a public body is relieved from meeting in public with the public present so long as we provide adequate means for the public to observe what is going on and hear any deliberations and votes. You may access this meeting on Brockton Community Access Channel 12 or through the YouTube Live The Brockton Channels. In addition, if for any reason we lose the ability to broadcast, I will recess the meeting, allow Brockton Community Access to reestablish the broadcast capability, and then go forward, and that is in accordance with Attorney General rules and regulations. Madam Clerk, item number one.
Accepted at the minute to be able to 26, 2021, City Council meeting.
Accepted and filed. Number two.
Accepted at the minute to be able to 27, 2021, Special City Council meeting.
Accepted and filed.
Appointments of David Sylvester of Ash Street, Brockton, and the Women's Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending May 2024.
Refer to Finance Committee.
Appointment of retired police officer William Healy and special police officer of the City of Brockton for a one-year term ending May 2022.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to move that we suspend the rules on act on this appointment this evening.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to-
On the motion, before we do begin, if I might, just a couple of quick comments in regards to the special police officer position for Officer William Healy. And as we all know, Mr. Healy's been with us for almost 33 years of service, outstanding service. He retired this past March, and he's going off to some, you know, happier things, I'm sure. But at the same time, I do want to mention, he was one of the advocates that worked very hard with his union, as he served as president for 14 years, to get the special police officer's position in place here in the city of Brockton. And when he did that, he came to me and he asked that I would, if I would support it with him, which I did, and it took us almost two and a half to three years to get the job done. And as you all know, this allows our officers, those that retire, a chance to come back and work in the city, who know the city and know traffic, and are able to also make just a little bit of extra funds for themselves. But to be here in our city and working still for us is most important. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And the last thing I would mention is that this gentleman here worked very close with all of us, some that may be new now, but as counselors, but counselors, past, present, as a crime watch coordinator. He worked with all of us, and he attended all our meetings, and he was a great advocate for crime watch within our neighborhoods. So appreciate that. So with that being said, Mr. President, I guess we can call the roll. Thank you.
All right, and that was a motion to suspend the rules and act on it this evening. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's been properly seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed. Is there a motion for reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail?
I'll make a motion for reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
No.
Cadozo?
Oh my God.
Sorry, can you repeat the motion?
It's a motion for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail on the appointment of Officer Healy.
Is a no for reconsideration?
A no is, would be against reconsideration.
Oh, yes. Right? I'm confused.
No, if you want to reconsider your prior vote, you would vote yes. If you are comfortable with your prior vote, you would vote no.
That's a no. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Ian Eary?
No.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
Ma- De Castro?
No.
Rodriguez?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Reconsideration fails?
Reconsideration fails. Officer Healy, thank you for your willingness to continue serving.
Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Counselor De Castro.
I just want to make sure. We voted on that motion to suspend the rules, didn't we?
And to act on it this evening.
We did, yeah. Okay.
We only took the one vote to act on the suspension of the rules and act on it tonight.
Should have been just to suspend, and then there should be another.
And there should be a second vote for confirmation.
And we didn't do confirmation?
No, you just did act on the suspension of rules.
All right, then we'll do another roll call vote on the actual appointment. We suspended the rules, but apparently we, my error, we did not vote on the actual appointment. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Now you are officially confirmed, Officer Healy.
Mr. President?
Counselor Lally.
I'd move that we, motion for reconsideration in the hopes that this does not prevail.
Second.
Motion made to, for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail. Would the clerk please call the roll? A no vote is against reconsideration.
Azak?
No.
Cadozo?
No.
Ian Eary?
No.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
De Castro?
No.
Rodriguez?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Reconsideration fails?
Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Mr. Clerk, item number five.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of May 3, 2021.
Accepted and filed. Item six.
Communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that the City Council transfer $400,000 from Highway Division Snow Removal Fund to the DPW Highway Capital Project Fund in order to purchase a new backhoe and sweeper as the current vehicles are in disrepair.
Accepted and filed. Number seven.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. Number eight.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. Number nine.
From the Acting Chief of the Fire Department requesting a transfer of $200,000 from Personal Services Non-Overtime to Fire Staffing Overtime to maintain all companies through the remainder of fiscal year 2021 due to vacations and vacant positions, as well as members on extended sick or injury leave.
Accepted and filed. Number 10.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. 11.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. Number 12.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant award in the amount of $40,000 from Mass. Development's TDI Challenge Grant to City of Brockton Planning and Economic Development.
Accepted and filed. 13.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. 14.
Communication from the Executive Director of the Board of Health requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant monies from the Department of Public Health, Office of Local and Regional Health, in the amount of $222,064. This is to support the COVID-19 vaccination capacity and confidence and priority community's response.
Accepted and filed.
The monies must be expended by June 30, 2022. There is no match required.
And 15?
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. 16.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. Number 17.
Communication from the Executive Director of the Board of Health requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of additional grant monies from the Department of Public Health, Office of Local and Regional Health, in the amount of $52,320. This is to support the COVID-19 emergency response. The monies must be expended by June 30, 2021.
Accepted and filed. 18.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. 19.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. 20.
From the, communication from the Director of Social Services from the mayor's office requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant award in the amount of $250,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Addiction Services to the City of Brockton Mayor's Office. There is no grant match from the city.
Accepted and filed. Number 21.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. 22.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. 23.
Communication from the Chief of Police Department requesting authorization to expend grant monies relative, related to the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, fiscal year 21 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant Award in the amount of $460,623.82.
Accepted and filed. 24.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and filed. 25.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and filed. 26.
Executive Summary for the Integrated Water Infrastructure Vulnerability Assessment and Economic Development Plan for Climate Resiliency for the City of Brockton by Fussin O'Neill to address questions and concerns by the City Council pertaining to the report. In City Council, April 26, 2021, the hearing was opened, postponed to May 10, 2021, City Council meeting.
Counselors, this hearing was continued until this evening, and I would ask that it be referred to FinCom for the reason that on tonight's agenda, as posted, there was no link to either a Zoom meeting or way to, way for the public to call in and comment. That's my responsibility. That's my fault. I take ownership for that. I should have checked the posting on the city's website, and I should have noticed that in advance of this evening. So I notified the people from Fussin O'Neill. They also indicated that they aren't preparing for a public hearing. They're preparing just to provide us with information. So I've shared some of this information with Counselor Azak, and I believe she's going to have a motion for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So with that, I'm making a motion to send this to the next Finance Committee meeting.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to refer to Finance. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
Refer to Finance. Number 27.
Appointment of Samantha Ambrose of 10 Kingman Street, Brockton, Mass. to the Planning Board for a five-year term ending April 2026. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, and that report was favorable.
Question now is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed. Item number 28.
The appointment of George Vega of 40 Goldfinch Drive, Brockton, Mass. to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending April 2024. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, and that report was favorable.
The question now is on confirmation by a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The appointment is confirmed. Item number 29.
Ordered acceptance and expenditure of the total grant award in the amount of $190,596 from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs Fiscal Year 21 Formula Grant to the City of Brockton Council on Aging Fiscal Year 21 Formula Grant Fund. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, and that report was favorable.
Question now is on adoption by a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. Item number 30.
Ordered that the City Council authorize the acceptance of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32, subsection 103j, to approve the acceptance by the Brockton Retirement Board of an increase of $1,000 in the maximum base amount upon which COLA is calculated for pension payments for fiscal year 21 and each year thereafter. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Counselor De Castro.
Thank you. Mr. President and colleagues, it has come to my attention that the language of this order has to be amended to comply with the requirements of the retirement board. At this time, I ask the clerk to read the amended language, and then I will make a motion to amend.
Amended. Ordered that the City Council accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, subsection 103j, and approve the acceptance by the Brockton Retirement Board of an incremental increase of $1,000 in the maximum base amount upon which the COLA is calculated for pension payments for fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. The base amount for fiscal year 21 will be $13,000, and for fiscal year 22, the amount will be $14,000.
Counselor Ian Eary? Once again, this would have a direct effect on me, so would you assume the helm, please?
More attention on you than we have to, right?
I agree.
All right, at this point, I believe we're voting on the amendment. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion to amend that.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to vote on the amendment as it's been read. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
And now the order, now we're going to be voting on the order as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
I make a motion for reconsideration in hopes that it fails.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
No.
Cadozo?
No.
Ian Eary?
No.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
De Castro?
No.
Rodriguez?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Reconsideration fails.
Reconsideration fails. Mr. President?
Item number 31.
Ordered that in order to reduce interest costs, the City Treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 21a, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or any portion of the city's general obligation bonds outstanding as of the date of adoption of this order, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal, redemption premium, and interest on the bonds of the city to be refunded, and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that the mayor and the city treasurer are each authorized to execute such documents as may be necessary or desirable to carry out this transaction, including one or more refunding trust agreements with a bank or trust company. Further ordered that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under General Laws, Chapter 44a, any and all bonds on notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may require. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable as amended.
Counselors, the first question is on the amendment. So if there's no discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
All right, the amendment is adopted. We now proceed to vote on the order as amended. Is there any discussion? If not, we will proceed to a vote. Chair sees no response. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order as amended is adopted. Item number 32.
Ordered acceptance and expenditure of the total grant award in the amount of $275,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development Grant to the City of Brockton Mayor's Office. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted. Item number 33.
Resolve that the mayor, Building Inspector James Pluff, and State Representative Michelle Dubois come before the Finance Committee to discuss the possibility of the city acquiring a Mass. Soiet Conference Center for use as a multi-generational community center. In City Council, April 26, 2021, read and referred to the Standing Committee on Finance, that report was favorable.
Question comes on adoption by a roll call vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The resolve is adopted. Item number 34.
Ordinance. An ordinance amending revised ordinance of the City of Brockton, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.2, Composition. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Brockton that Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.2 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton be amended to strike the following provision. The increase in the number of captains in the Fire Department shall be for a limited time only. The additional position of an 18th captain, as set forth in this amendment, shall be eliminated, and the number of captains allowed in the Fire Department shall revert back to 17 immediately upon a vacancy occurring in said title for any reason, including but not limited to the termination, resignation, retirement, promotion, to the termination, resignation, retirement, promotion, or any other separation from employment by any one of the 18 captains of the Fire Department. The proposed amendment, if adopted, shall result in the ordinance reading as follows: The Fire Department shall consist of a fire chief and the following assistants, b. 18 captains.
Refer to Chairman Ian Eary and the Ordinance Committee. Item thirty-five.
Mr. President?
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I make a motion to take Agenda Items Number 35 and 36 collectively.
Second.
All right, motion made and properly seconded to take 35 and 36 collectively. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
We need to read them.
I'm sorry?
We need to read them first, don't we?
You can math it about.
Okay.
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
All right, would the clerk please read 35 and 36?
Ordered that the order adopted by the Brockton City Council on April 26, 2021, relative to naming the street to be constructed as part of the so-called Trinity Development between Main Street and Montello Street, and which will intersect with Petronelli Way as Marvin Hagler Drive, hereby be rescinded so that a substitute order may be adopted by the Brockton City Council to correct the name to Marvelous Marvin Hagler Drive. Thirty-six, ordered pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20-2 of the revised ordinances of the City of Brockton, the street to be constructed as part of the so-called Trinity Development between Main Street and Montello Street, and which will intersect with Petronelli Way shall be named Marvelous Marvin Hagler Drive.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to take these Agenda Item Number 35 and Number 36 under a suspension of the rules so that we may vote for final passage tonight. The reason these matters are before the council is after we approved the Marvin Hagler Drive street name, it was brought to my attention that Mr. Hagler actually legally changed his name to Marvelous Marvin Hagler. A nice woman reached out to me and told me about how proud Mr. Hagler was of his legal name change to Marvelous. She actually sent me a video of a 1987 interview with David Letterman in which Mr. Hagler expressed how proud he was of legally changing his name to Marvelous. I believe if we are to tribute, you know, honor the man with naming a street after him, we should do it right by naming it after his legal name. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second. All right, there's been a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and act on this this evening. That will be the first vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
All right, the rules are suspended. We will now vote, and you will be voting collectively on 35 and 36. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eight in the affirmative.
The orders are approved. Item number thirty-seven.
Ordered total transfer of $400,000 from DPW Highway Snow Removal to DPW Highway Capital.
Refer to the Finance Committee. Number thirty-eight.
Ordered total transfer of $200,000 from Fire Department full-time salaries to Fire Department staffing overtime.
Counselor Azak.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take this item under suspension of the rules and act on it this evening.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion made and properly seconded to suspend the rules and act on this this evening. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Azak?
Yes.
Cadozo?
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
All right, the rules are suspended. We now return to the order itself. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, we will proceed to a vote.